It's 5:30, so we're gonna go ahead and call the Finance Committee to order. Have two items before the Finance Committee. First one has to do with agreement with Springdale Chamber of Commerce. Does anyone want to address this, Kobe or who?
Yes, sir. I'll take that. This is the contract for the Chamber of Commerce. Typically, we do this early in the winter, usually February.
But you figured it'd be good just to pull it right up after the trip to DC though?
At the request of Bill Rogers. Typically, we do do it in February. However, the contract will expire December 31st of this year. It's, once again, this is a two-year contract. They're not asking for an increase in the amount. In spite of all the inflation and rising costs, they're gonna keep the amount the same at 225,000. It's paid quarterly to the Chamber of Commerce to handle our economic development, promotion, ribbon cuttings, recruitment of different industry to our city, and they've done a good job of that this past year.
So why are we doing it now?
Because the contract will end December 31st of this year. So we were gonna go ahead and we felt like it'd be good for y'all to know how much we need to budget for again this year before we have our budget meeting next month. So we're bringing it before you now. We can go ahead and accept the agreement and it'll go into effect January 1st.
It's the same as last year's?
Yes, sir.
On this, our section one here, it says implementation, development, and management of marketing and advertisement campaigns. Are you guys in on that with them? Or do you guys like say, hey, this is what we want to advertise? This is what we're looking for? Do we see that?
Well, we don't. Yeah, they do their thing in promoting Springdale. But if there's a particular, if there's a particular area we want them to go, well, certainly, we have that ability to ask them to help with that.
I'd really like to see that in the report to us. This is, you know, this is what we're encouraging, how we're doing that.
Well, we can, Scott kinda touches on that when he does his report, but he can enhance that a little bit.
I think Mr. Lawson can tell you, based on A and P meetings, they have a staff of these young folks who are into all the latest Wi-Fi connections with, to how to contact the different groups that might be interested in each specific area. And they got, they track that, have the number of contacts, each media outlet work that works for them. And it's pretty impressive when you hear their, when they hear their presentation because they're, they're well aware of what it takes, whether it's for bikes, or whether it's for softball, et cetera. So I've, I had the same questions until I got on the committee. I'm very impressed with the staff they have that handles that.
We can, what we can do is sure, you know, we've got Mike Overton and Mike Lawson on the A and P, and that's where most of that is shown monthly. But we can sure have them, have Scott add that or bring, bring somebody with him.
Have one of these intelligent young people come on and forget about Scott.
Okay.
Scott's gone, or he's leaving. Scott's leaving.
Oh, that's right, he is.
So it'll be somebody new, I'm sure. But I'd just like to see when they do their presentation, kinda maybe some pictures of what they're doing.
We can do that.
Yeah, one, that would, that would be a real good program, I think.
Yep. They also have the Explore Springdale app. If you don't have that downloaded, that's a good resource too, and it markets to our entire region. They do a good job.
You can see everything, all of those things they put out, videos and other, other posts.
When were you wanting that report?
It's on his court, I think he's quarterly that he's got a report to us.
On his quarterly report?
Yeah, I think that's where it says this on here.
If there's something specific you want in the report about that broad topic, I'm sure they'll be happy to get the specifics.
They could, they could just include the clicks and the, you know, what they've done, like the same thing they show A and P.
I don't know if you're looking for responses to their marketing and advertising, or if you're saying you want us to have more input, or if you'll tell me specifically.
I'd just like to see some examples of what, what they are doing with this money, you know. So we, we just know kinda what direction they're going in, and kinda if we're going after, it says you're going after industrial, pretty much every sector is what it looks like. But, but I'd just like to see some examples.
We can do that.
Make a motion before the resolution to counsel with recommendation of approval.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion concerning this resolution? If not, all those in favor or forward in council with recommendation, please say aye. Any opposed, like sign. All right, thank you very much. Second item before the Finance Committee has to do with the Springdale Library enclosure project.
Marcia has, Marcia and I met a couple of weeks ago. She's gotten some updated information and pricing on a preliminary design. I think the design you see, and Marcia, correct me if I'm wrong, but the design you see is similar in, as far as the, the stage it's in, as the design we approved preliminarily for the senior center to go ahead and move forward with, with full design. They've been working on this, Height Jackson, I believe, has been working on this project. And actually, the prices, we wanted, we wanted, we wanted to bring it to you after we had some, at least initial estimate. So Marcia, go ahead and we got, we got library board members here too?
We do. I would like to acknowledge that we have our board president and library board members here, Paula Wilson and Lori Marshall. And I have here beside me Anne Gresham, who will be interim director after next week when I'm gone. So you'll be seeing more of Anne. You'll probably see her in October at that budget meeting. That's kinda how I plan my retirement anyway. This is a project that was introduced to us about 2018, when we had some consultants working with us. And they had a list of things that they thought would help improve the library. We've been through the list. We've done four or five of them. And enclosing the courtyard is kind of the last big project on that list. This would give us some additional square footage, and it finishes up building on any space that is available there on that square in the corner of Murphy Park. As the mayor said, we wanted to bring something, something to you that you could see. And so we went ahead, our foundation approved to pay the design fee. So we've been working with Height Jackson for a couple of months. And so what we have is a little slideshow to show you today. And Anne's going to do most of the talking, I think. Okay.
All right. Hello, is this my advance right here?
I'm assuming it is.
Let's see. Oh, yes, perfect. All right. Hello. We are here tonight to open a conversation with you about the potential for enclosing our existing outdoor courtyard space and repurposing it as interior programming and event space for the library. And I would just like to very briefly walk you through why we need this, what it could look like, and what it would cost. Marcia already touched on our rationale quite a bit. I did want to add, we are in desperate need of programming space. We, we can draw a crowd. Where we struggle is seating that crowd. We have had several events over the summer that had over 100 participants. Our existing meeting rooms will not accommodate that number. Frankly, Springdale has grown faster than those rooms have been able to keep pace with. So what our children's staff have done was hold these events in our children's department, which made the children's collection completely inaccessible for the duration. It's a struggle with extension cords and data and AV equipment. It's not optimized for sound. We have people sitting in between the stacks at these events. We think that we could do more and better programming with more and better space, essentially. And we are looking for flexible multi-use space as well. In addition to our traditional storytime and performance-based programming, we'd really like to explore maker programming or other sorts of community interest programming, like cooking classes, life skills classes, CPR training might be on the table. There's a lot that we could do with local community organizations as well, who do use our existing meeting rooms. This would provide more opportunity for us to meet that community need while we're at it. And we're also thinking about the future. Springdale continues to grow. The library needs to grow with it. And we may not know exactly what programs we will need to be holding in that future, but it's a pretty safe bet. They're gonna require power and data, and we can bake that right into this design at this stage and hopefully be ready to grow along with the rest of the community. And the work that we've done so far, Marcia's walked you through this pretty, pretty thoroughly, but our staff did a needs assessment at the end of 2021. The outcome of that was, we landed on the most efficient way that we could bring a maximum benefit to Springdale, which was more and better programming space. We brought that to the library board. They were very supportive of the project. The foundation agreed to fund up to $30,000 in design costs for the project, and that's been completed. We worked with Height Jackson Associates to get that done. And the key piece of information for you tonight is that the project is estimated at a $1.1 million cost. And now I'll show you what exactly we are talking about. This is the proposed addition. We have a couple of trim options color-wise. The lighter color would match the existing trim on the, on the rest of the building. I understand they won't be able to match materials, but the idea is to match the color. We also have the darker color as well. This is the west side of the building that faces Pleasant Street. And this is the north-facing side of the building that you would see driving down Maple Street. And again, we have the two color options, as well as a view directly facing it. And I do have these printed out for you, if you'd like to see them at a little bit slower pace later on.
So Anne, on that picture?
Yes, sir.
Sorry to interrupt. The awning that you can see in that picture is the existing awning?
Let's see, which, which picture?
Yeah, I think at the entrance, Jeff?
Yes.
Yes, that's, that's existing.
That's the existing entrance?
Yes.
So that's basically the area to the north of the entrance?
Yes, yes. The main entrance of the library. So this, this is all built out to the side of that.
You can see in that picture, Jeff, where the current library ends, where the current building ends.
And then we used to have like tents or something out there?
Yeah, it's a metal fence.
Yes. We've not had great luck with outdoor programming in that space. Even with shade, it gets incredibly hot in the summer, which is when we have the most demand for it. And we, we, we've struggled with some hail damage with those tents recently. And it's not a good, the tents aren't a good rain solution either. And inside, this is an interior rendering. And you can see they've added some design elements using millwork and color and glass to create patterns on the floor of color that would change as the light from the day progresses, just to give it a little bit of character. You can get a little bit of a sense of the depth of the space and hopefully the possibilities. This is the proposed floor plan. You can see there's a large multi-use main area. There's a pretty substantial storage. That's in red toward the bottom in the center. And next to that, you'll see two bathrooms. There's an emergency exit near the bathrooms. We also, since this drawing was given to us, we requested an additional entrance that opens out into the parking lot. That would make it possible for us to keep this space open even after regular library hours, should that need ever arise. We've also planned to have a sliding glass door in between this space and our existing children's auditorium. That would give us the ability to have one very large space if we ever had an event that required something like that. And we asked Height Jackson for plentiful storage for this, and they delivered. There's lots of cabinetry built in as well.
Does that replace the existing bathrooms, or is that in addition to the existing bathrooms?
These would be in addition to. We have bathrooms in our children's department. You can actually see them in this drawing in the lower white part. They are child size, which is not ideal if you're not a child. So we had planned to have adult, restrooms for adults in this space.
How many square foot is the, the room, the one room?
So the, the total square foot is 2,900. The actual, that, that blue square right there is 1,800. And that compares to our existing spaces. The Shiloh Room is 740, and the children's auditorium is 1,200. And I'll walk you through a couple of possible configurations for this space really fast to hopefully give you an idea of how we would like to use it. This is a pretty traditional event setup that would seat 96. By comparison, we can comfortably seat 35 in the Shiloh Room and 40 in the children's auditorium. So this would be a substantial level up for us. This would be useful for performances. We've had Opera of the Ozark, Sona, Ballet Folklorico. This would be a great space for that, or author events, lectures. It could also be used for community input meetings or city staff events, and for nonprofit and student organization use as well, which might come in handy given our proximity to Springdale High School. Another way to think about the space would be a more collaborative, hands-on setup, which would be represented here. This is a capacity of 72, but arranges participants into small groups of four to six. This would be ideal for makerspace programming, or things like robotics challenges, circuit building. We'd like to offer some sort of cooking program. We could do that with mobile kitchen units if we had appropriate space and storage for them. This could also be used for tutoring, or for job or community resource fairs. It could also potentially be used for banquets or receptions, which we don't have a good space right now to offer at all. And then finally, a big empty space has a lot of utility for us. This is something that could be used for dance or movement-based programming. It would be great for storytime, where your audience does like to be on the floor and needs the freedom to get up and move around during the program. We could also include a modular furniture set that we could use for smaller-scale programs or for smaller-scale community use as well. And that's what I had to say. This is the cost estimate broken down by materials. And again, that total came out to $1,145,170. And that's, that's what we have to say. And if you have any questions, please let us know, and we'd love to answer them.
Okay. So Anne, we're not, we're not necessarily asking to prepare a resolution tonight for anything. We're gonna get, as the design moves forward, did the, did the board pay for the complete design to get to building, building drawings? I mean, buildable design?
We don't have construction documents yet.
Okay, so, so we need to bring forward for the council's consideration. Is that right?
Yes.
That, that was the plan?
Yes.
To bring forward for council's consideration, a contract with Height Jackson to get to buildable, to construction drawings. And then we would have a definite not-to-exceed price, or at least a price, a price to go to bid, or if we did the, the construction management model, then we would, we would work with a contractor to get a not-to-exceed price. Correct? So, council, how would you want to move forward? This is, I, I feel like, and we can, we can sure discuss this, but you know, we are doing, we are planning to do a bond issue hopefully next year. But I'm, I'm feeling like this is a, this would be a pretty small project for a separate ballot question. And, and given where we are with our, with our unreserved, with our unencumbered reserves, I, I discussed with Marcia that I would, I would be willing to support and bring to y'all a, just a, depending on what the, what the final, not, what the final price is going to be, with consideration of going ahead and funding the construction out of our, out of our reserves. But I guess the first step, though, just like we've done with the senior center, senior center, would be to go ahead and, and come back with a resolution after we negotiate a contract with, with Height Jackson, and bring forward a resolution with a, with a price for, for full design.
Yeah, Mayor, this, just based on the cost estimate that they've given us tonight, I think a, a safe price on just the architectural work would be somewhere under $75,000, and that would get a shovel ready for whenever we were ready to.
Kobe, what's the balance of the library's trust fund they have?
I'd have to have somebody from the library answer that.
The balance is somewhere in the vicinity of 500,000. It's invested in an investment
I would, I would rather we consider taking this on. Right. You were, you were planning on using that for holding it?
What about for design? You weren't planning on spending any more for design?
Well, that has been paid for.
No.
Up to, up to 30,000 for just the design.
Conceptual designs, but not full design, including estimate.
Right. I think that at this point, the board felt that the, we needed the involvement of the city, rather than to go ahead and spend an additional 60, $75,000, not knowing if there was support, city council to do this.
You think that, you think the, your hope is to pay for furniture and fixtures out of, out of your portion? Out of your, okay.
Is there any other possibilities of payment besides a bond?
There, we just, we discussed with Cody. He's researching it with DRS, our consultants out of Georgetown, Texas, to see if that's gonna be an eligible expense through ARPA, because it would give them a lot more space, similar to our reasoning behind building Station 4 out of ARPA funds. This wouldn't be out of lost revenue, ARPA funds. This would be the, the original ARPA funds. So we, we're researching that. We hope that that's a possibility. As far as paying for the design, and this is, this is the latest as of a couple of weeks ago. We, since we've moved the latest lost revenue, we have about 21 million in our general, general fund that's unrestricted and unreserved. We are under budget this year. So I think that's the request, is to pay the architectural fee out of that, and then find, whenever we're ready for construction, try to pay for it out of ARPA.
Well, that, that sounds like a good idea.
If it's eligible, yeah. I don't, I don't think we wanna, we, as much as I want to do the project, I'd prefer that we don't make it a single ballot issue.
No, no, I didn't mean to encourage bond. I was just wondering if it's possible paying out something else.
We, we hope it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, we hope it is.
So I don't mean to get too technical, Marcia or Anne, but back on the other drawings, the, there's some sort of a exit or entrance off to the north. I assume that's north.
Yes.
What's the purpose of that?
That's an emergency exit.
So it's not a public entrance?
No, we, we did add an additional entrance. Let's see. Does this work as a pointer? I think you can see it in the exterior renderings. So right at the juncture of the addition and the existing building, there is an entrance.
On the west side?
Yeah, yeah.
Does that create any kind of a, would that be, it wouldn't be open all the time?
No.
It's just for special events?
Correct, correct. When that space is monitored by staff.
Yeah, okay. So were we wanting to take action on the design tonight, or what?
If you want to, we can bring a, we can bring a resolution. We can have a resolution ready for Monday.
Hopefully, we'd have the numbers we were talking about, though, when we were talking about the design.
Do you want to just forward to council without recommendation?
What, what numbers, Mike?
Well, for the architectural.
A number not to exceed or something?
We've gotta, we've gotta negotiate a contract and everything else.
That, that's just my estimate, based on the number they gave us tonight, but they will propose a contract to us, and we can negotiate it.
So that would, we, we're not really ready to act on anything anyway, then?
No, you could, we could, we could put it on the agenda if we would have the numbers by, where you could have them before the meeting.
Well, thank you.
Well, they initially suggested to us that the expense would be around 90,000, whereas the library board or the foundation board agreed to pay the first 30,000, which was designated as design. And then that leaves the additional 60, maybe up to 75,000.
Yeah, typically, these are 6% contracts for architectural work, and so that's based on that number. But like this, they've already paid the initial for conceptual drawing, so it's probably gonna, it came out to 68,000 on my calculator, but I just wanted to be safe and say 75.
If y'all wanted to forward it, then we, if we don't have, if we don't have the numbers, then we can, we can table it, or put it off until the next meeting, next council meeting. Either way.
I'm for moving forward with it. Get a resolution ready.
If we can have a resolution ready, then, right?
Right.
Is that what you mean?
We can have a resolution to put in your packet. And if we don't have a number yet, we will give you the number as soon as we have it Friday or Monday.
It's gonna be quick?
Yeah.
All right, why don't we just forward it without any kind of recommendation?
Right.
And if we have the numbers, we can deal with it. If we don't, we can table it.
Right.
Does that sound, is that your motion?
Sounds good.
Do you have a second for that suggestion?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry, were you saying something else?
I just said we can leave these renderings here.
Be great.
Okay, so we have a motion to forward the proposal, hopeful, and hopeful resolution for the design of this new portion of the library with recommendation, no, without recommendation. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, left side. All right, thank you very much. Anything else before the Finance Committee? All right, if not, we're closed.
All right, I'm gonna open up the Police and Fire Committee, and we have three items coming before us. The first is a capital equipment purchases for the Springdale Police Department. And we've got Assistant Chief Derek Hudson here with us tonight. Looks like the request is gonna be coming out of drug seizure funds, and Derek's gonna take it from here.
Yeah, we just want to request permission to transfer some drug seizure funds to make several cap, capital equipment purchases. That list of items should be in front of you there in your packet. We've obtained all the necessary bids for those, with the exception of those that are sole source and/or on a government contract. I'd be happy to speak to any of those items if you want me to, or answer any questions.
But bottom line is not, you have the, the fund, so basically, you have to come to us to get permission just to change it from unencumbered to purchases of equipment, correct?
Yes, sir.
I'd, I'd move the resolution to move forward to the council for a recommendation for approval.
Second.
And how often, how often do, do you do that, where you make purchases out of this fund?
I can't speak to the last time we moved them, but I know that we, we do come to you. I don't remember the last time we came to you.
We buy cars out of that. We got a lot of stuff.
And, and do you know anything, Derek, as far as how much is left in the fund after this?
I do not have those numbers in front of me. I know we called Cody, and he gave us the total amount that was in there. I do not have that on my memo in front of me. Do you know what it was? 300,000?
I saw it was 300,000.
I believe they got 360 some odd thousand dollars in that account.
Okay.
And there's no, there's no way of knowing how quickly that builds up. It just depends on?
It depends on a variety of factors, yes.
How many drugs?
How much drug interdiction we have?
Yeah.
And there's no time limitation on spending it?
No, we're, we're under no time constraints on this necessarily right now, no. There, there are a variety of constraints on those funds and how we use them and when we use them. But this in particular, we're under no constraints. No, sir.
Any other discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second to forward this with recommendation for approval. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Thank you, Derek. We're gonna move this forward. Next on our agenda, we have a resolution waiving bidding for authorization, authorizing purchase of helmets for our fire department. Chief Oates here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The, the first act, or ask is for, kinda similar to what Derek?
Just don't let this be a habit.
I've gotta, I, hold, hold on just a second, Blake. Sorry to interrupt. I've gotta stand up for our new council member, because he did not, he's not been set up yet. He's been set up, but he didn't know it. So, so anyway, we'll, we'll get that all straightened out tomorrow. He'll get his, get his iPad and get his, do we need to have orientation with you or something?
Well, you had Overton and Watson talk to me all day. I mean.
Well, as long as, we'll accept him as long as he can't vote tonight. That's not a problem.
Okay. Did you get a hard copy of the agenda then, Reg?
Yes.
Okay. We're at, we're at item?
Four.
Item four. Mm-hmm. Okay, go ahead, Blake, I'm sorry.
All right, yeah, no worries. So the, the purpose is to replace all of our fire helmets and kinda change the way that we use them. The money would come from Act 833, which is a dedicated fund for fire department-only purchases. We're limited on what we can spend them on, but personal protective equipment is included. It's, we've got a significant amount, amount of money available, and so.
Again, these, these funds aren't coming out of your budget, correct?
Correct.
It says a prepayment apparatus would save the city 8,800.
Well, yeah, there's two things. Okay, so on, on this, on the helmets, there's, they're sold as two-piece. You've got the helmet and then a front. And so they're, they're doing a promotion right now that we kinda, it wasn't advertised, but we found it and, and captured it, and they're gonna honor it. So it'll save us 8,800 if we purchase all of them today. So that's why I'm doing all of them at once. And they're, they're a 10-year life item.
I move forward the rec, the resolution to council with recommendation for approval.
Second. All right, we've got a motion and a second, is there any other discussion? All those in favor, uh, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you, Chief, for that, next one is, uh, item five, waiving competitive bidding, authorizing the purchase of a fire apparatus, and, uh, Chief is here to bring it up for us.
I am, this is in line with our, uh, routine apparatus replacement schedule, uh, fire engine five is slated to be replaced, uh, the end of twenty-twenty-four. We had a quote prepared and, uh, some unique things are what's prompted me to ask today. Number one is that they have a twenty-nine month projected, uh, delivery date, so it's gonna be over two years before we could see it. Uh, we also have a prepay option, uh, if we pay the, the total when we order it, it'll save us thirty-four thousand, six hundred thirteen dollars. Uh, they also let us know that November one, they are making their single largest ever, uh, increase at Pierce apparatus of six percent, so, uh, by, by agreeing to purchase and prepay will save a significant amount of money.
Uh, probably over a hundred grand, is that right? Can you figure, do you have that?
Yes, because the, um, in, initial cost of the truck was eight hundred nineteen thousand, projected, and then take our prepay discount off. We also removed, we have a standard sixty-five thousand for equipment that we include, that Pierce includes with the truck, uh, ladders, hoes, things like that, that have to be on there, that NFPA requires, but since this is going to replace uh, a truck that we have in reserve right now, we can move that equipment over and so we won't have that, uh, additional cost when we buy the truck.
So, does this require a budget amendment? Are you wanting to do this to the two thousand twenty-two budget?
We're wanting, we're asking, yeah, go ahead, Kobe.
Yeah, we'd like to go ahead and take it out of the unrestricted general fund, since there's
So it does require a budget amendment?
It's not a budget, we're not gonna budget it into the fire department, we're just gonna take it directly out of the general fund. I mean, we could, if we wanted to do that, but it's just as well to pay for it out of the general fund, it's unrestricted. And we'd rather, we would rather go ahead and pay for it now, since we have such a surplus. We've got enough cash on hand to do this without having to wait and budget for it and spend an extra, I think it was eighty-eight thousand.
Okay, so I'll ask the same question that I asked about the library. Is it possible to use other funds to make this purchase?
This is not gonna be eligible under ARPA. It's, it's not used by the public, it's used for public purposes, but not used by the public.
This would need to come out of our
Unreserved.
Out of our unreserved, but we are saving, I think we're saving over a hundred grand altogether.
Yeah, we would, we
If we're doing that.
Yeah, if we elected to pay for it, you know, two years down the road, like at time of delivery, it'd be quite a bit more than that.
Well, even if we waited until after November first.
So you're thinking time of delivery is when?
They, they gave us twenty-nine months as a projected date, we hope that's conservative, uh, that it would be a little bit sooner, but, uh, it'll be two years.
Really, and so you, you said that this was part of your, your plan to replace for twenty-twenty-four any, already, I mean, or you, you said something like that about twenty-twenty-four?
Yeah.
That you already had this in a plan?
Yes.
For replacement for twenty-twenty-four?
Yep.
What other replacements do you have planned?
Our next apparatus isn't due to be replaced until twenty-seven.
Until what?
Twenty-twenty-seven.
Twenty-twenty-seven.
Yep.
How about additional, uh, trucks or ambulances?
Our additional trucks will come, uh, ambulances we already took care of, uh, at, at the start of this year. We have one that's, uh, soon to be delivered, and that's a remount, so all it needed was a chassis. Uh, the new one, they can't even give us a projected date on that yet, those are
We've already, we've already planned for that.
Yep, that's already taken care of.
What about in the future, though?
The future trucks will come when we build fire stations, so we don't have any anticipated uh, large apparatus needs until that time comes.
So at the very earliest, we're talking about twenty-twenty-five?
Correct.
For another, for another apparatus, because if we, if we decide to go ahead and do the rebuild of Station Four, there's no additional apparatus involved in that.
Right.
Any other discussions?
How much is in the unrestricted general?
Twenty-one.
So if we have a, if we have a fire station possibility of a new fire station in twenty-twenty-five, when do we need to start planning purchases of apparatus for that?
As soon as we can.
If it's a twenty-nine month wait?
Yeah, we're, we're hoping like the rest of the vehicle market that those times
Shorten.
Start to shorten, but really until we decide that the fire station is a possibility, I would, I wouldn't feel great about committing funds.
And, and Jeff, what we've done traditionally is pay for, pay for that as part of the bond for that fire station.
Right.
So, one, and, and once we know and have, and the public has approved the bond issue, anytime we order after that, we can order with a resolution to take it out of bond proceeds, so. Or to reimburse the bond for that amount.
Any other discussion?
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second to move this re, resolution forward with recommendation for approval. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. It will be forwarded, thank you, Chief, very, very much, and with that, I will close out the police and fire committee.
I have one question, when we do those bond issues, I hadn't been a part of one, so when we do the bond issues for fire stations, do we include the cost of fitting these trucks and
Yes.
Things, everything that's needed?
The bond, the bond, the language on that ballot issue will include, will, will provide the ability for also, to also pay for the the trucks out of it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Brian, you want to take committee of the whole?
Yeah, there you go.
I have been told to take committee of the whole.
This continues on.
All right.
Whoever had the last committee before.
Rex could do it.
That's what Rex does.
We won't do that to you.
All right, we'll, we'll do the committee of the whole, we have a resolution authorizing the execution of a temporary use agreement on property owned by the city of Springdale, and, uh, our city attorney will present this.
Thank you, uh, as you know, the, uh, Northwest Arkansas food systems project is, uh, been given, I believe, large-scale development approval.
Market center of the Ozarks.
Yes.
Yeah.
And the city owns, uh, you're familiar with this property, because we had a, recently had an offer to to purchase that the city didn't, uh, accept, but at any rate, uh, the contractor for this project would like to utilize that property, uh, there's on, it's on page, well, red page twenty-three shows you where the property is located for the staging of equipment and materials during the construction of this project, and the temporary use agreement would allow us to terminate the temporary use agreement, uh, with thirty days' notice if we got an offer for someone to purchase the property, and it would end at such time as the project is completed, uh, for April twenty, April first of twenty-twenty-four unless we extend it. So this would allow them to, uh, use this property basically during construction.
Anything happens to anything, uh, any impact in their property on our property, or are we comfortable with that?
No, if you look at, uh, I think it's paragraph four, they, they hold us harmless for any, anything that happens on the property.
And they will return it to light conditions when we're done?
That's with the agreement, yes. We, we've done something similar, Public Facilities Board did something similar for the, uh, Ford Avenue project, they had a a lot that they owned, uh, at the corner of, uh,
Ford.
Ford, and then, so the new road was coming through, and it worked out really well, actually, they ended up, now they've got an offer to, someone to buy it, so.
Sir, what's the term?
It, it's, uh, completion of the project, uh, will not extend beyond April first of twenty-twenty-four without our permission, but if we get an offer to purchase it, uh, we can terminate it with thirty days' notice before then.
And are they responsible for mowing and everything during this time period?
They're responsible for everything while they're using it, yes.
The whole lot?
Yes.
The whole, the entire property, okay.
Yes. Yeah, there's a, I don't know if you can see it, it's pretty small, on page, uh, twenty-six, the red page twenty-six kinda shows what they were thinking like with the construction trailer and it'll greatly assist them being able to use that in the construction of this much-new project.
And we're just doing this as a favor, or what?
They, they've requested that they be allowed to use it and not being used for anything else right now.
So we're doing it as a favor?
Yeah. If we, if we should sell the property, as Ernest said, we can get out in thirty days, get out of it within the, the agreement, and then I'm sure they would negotiate with the new property owner to continue to use it if they could.
What if for some reason we decide to expand Emma, would this interfere with that in any way?
I don't think so, I, I don't know that we would be, have the ability or be looking to do that before twenty-twenty-four uh, anyway, but we would, we'd just need access to that right away, is that something we need to put in there, Ernest?
We, we can if you want, I'm sure they wouldn't have an issue with that, because mainly their use is the, the back part. Of course, they're putting in that new drive.
They're putting in, they're putting in the access to Emma also. So we need to be sure they do that in such a way that when Emma is widened, that, yeah, that it, it, it still works.
Which that's considered in the large scale.
Right. Right, that'll be in their large scale.
Any other comments?
I make a motion to forward the resolution to council with recommendation for approval with that additional language, if possible.
Second.
All right, we've
I, I do have one further question. So we're granting this right to the contractor? So our indemnity is with the contractor? Could we not, I mean, all right. Are we?
Isn't that the way we usually do it?
I don't know, that's what I'm asking.
It wouldn't be the, it wouldn't be the it wouldn't be the owners of the next lot, or the next, or the building.
That's how we did it with the Public Facilities Board, it worked perfectly.
We
It was a tri-store.
Okay. All right.
You good? We have a motion and a second for this resolution, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Brian, before you move, I'm sorry, Ernest, before you move on, while we're still in that part of town, just to let you know, uh, we con, uh, Kobe contacted Mike Shamley, we got to go ahead, uh, to go ahead and raise those houses that we've purchased across the street, along Willella, so you'll be seeing those come down soon.
I've got one other issue while we're on this one, if I may, Mr. Chairman, uh, it didn't get, uh, it didn't get to the, my office or the mayor's office in time to get on the agenda, but it's a similar resolution uh, as far as the temporary use agreement, this one's only for sixty days in connection with the first security project that are nearby, Shadow Square, just for some geotechnical testing. It's not on the agenda tonight, but I wanted to make you aware, we're probably gonna put it on the council agenda for Tuesday. Doesn't have to come to committee first, because it's a resolution, but it's a, it's a smaller version of what you just, yeah, but it's only for geotechnical testing for sixty days. Just wanted to make you aware of that, so you wouldn't be surprised if it's on the agenda.
All right, next on the agenda, we have trail finding overview and updates presented by, uh, Mike Peterson.
Uh, good evening, uh, I was asked to come and give an update on the trail situation, and, uh, I put together a real quick little PowerPoint here. Um, so the first thing I'd like to go over is the, is the, uh, projects we have under construction right now. Emma Avenue, uh, Monday, we're gonna shut that down between Holcomb and Spring Street and start the construction on the street. Uh, that should have probably been shut down in June, but the holdup has been, uh, utility relocation and, uh, trying to get the supplies so that the street's not shut down any longer than it has to be. It will probably be February or March before it's opened back up. Guess the good news is, when it's finished, it's gonna be an amazing project, I've been over there every week since they started. They, uh, they're building these concrete planners and, uh, a plaza, this is looking north from Meadow. Looking south from Emma, there's, it's, it's gonna be really nice, uh, it's gonna straighten up that alignment and have a nice little park there.
Mike, just so, um, while I'm thinking, uh, about it, the, uh, during construction, there's gonna be great effort to make the sidewalks accessible and all the, so all the businesses in that stretch between Holcomb and Spring will be able to have customers
We've been, we've been communicating with, uh, with the businesses in that area and doing everything we can to work with them, downtown Spring Alliance is kinda taking the lead on that, but I've been communicating with them.
Who's in charge of this project, the, the Emma portion of it?
As far as Milestone's doing the work, is that what you mean?
For who? Us?
Yes.
Yeah. The grant, the city received a grant, but the city, it's a city's project.
Yes.
So, so basically Milestone will be reporting to
McClellan is doing the engineer work on it, and McClellan Engineering, so we're working with McClellan and Milestone.
Mike will be the point of contact, I imagine, well, you or Ben won, I, I'm assuming it'll be you.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm over there multiple times a week, and I talk to him about every day.
So, so the inspection of this work, will that be done through engineering or through?
It'll be McClellan.
Ben's welcome to help us, but, uh, we've paid McClellan to do it, so.
McClellan's gonna be doing the inspection?
Yes.
Along the way, oh, yes.
Yes. I'm not wrong, am I?
No, that, that's correct, I, I have assigned John Easterling to, uh, to this project.
So, so you're, you're, you're basically in charge, right, Ben?
No, Mike is in charge, I'm helping Mike.
Mike's the active transportation planner, so this fits more into that, but Ben, he'll be working, he, y'all, that, y'all are in constant
We, we just have more experience with construction projects, we're going to assist in that part of it, but this is Mike's project.
Yeah.
Right.
And, and the day-to-day, uh, uh, supervision is, is falling under McClellan Engineering.
Mike, I have a question, um, so the, the part that is currently closed on Emma is going to reopen, like they inquired about it.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, so
And it's gonna open, and then that other section is gonna be closed, so really, for anybody who uses that, it's still gonna be closed.
We, 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 uh, hold, held off closing this until the other portion was ready to open, and, and I'm under the impression that it's gonna be open by the end of the week. You're talking about Berry, Emma and Berry?
Yeah.
Yes.
So there's gonna be, is there better access then to, um, Jones Center, I think is the biggest one that I get from people.
I think this, when, once that opens, when Emma clo, when Emma closes from Holcomb to Spring, I think that's gonna be a much easier detour, both ways, and then, and then, yeah, it, it'll, I think it'll be much better, uh, much easier detour, shorter detour also. Yeah.
Thank you.
Right.
Okay. Uh, Dean's Trail Phase Two, that's the section going underneath Robinson Avenue. It's, uh, currently under utility relocation, uh, early December, the first two weeks of December, they plan on starting underneath Robinson Avenue with the tunnel. That's gonna take two weeks. During that two weeks, we're gonna be shut down to one lane in each direction. But, uh, hopefully they will get that done without delay. The entire project will be done February of twenty-three.
And the shutdown, we've had to work with RDOT through all that process, and that's one reason we had to rebid the project was because of the working out, working through some things and how long that could be closed with RDOT.
Evidently, this is a pretty, uh, pretty difficult project run, our third contractor.
Is the tunnel gonna be poured in place, or do they have precast?
I believe they have precast, unless you Yeah.
It is.
The engineering is really, our engineers are involved with this quite a bit, but, uh, yeah. Here's a picture, uh, I took this from the, uh, parking lot of, uh, Taco Bell, next to the fire station, uh, leading up to the, going underground. This is a close-up, uh, the hole's fifteen feet deep right now. There to the left of that is the water line that they had to relocate. They're also working both sides of the highway, so that, uh, it'll be, it's done as quick as possible once they They're also working both sides of the highway so that, uh, it'll be, it's done as quick as possible once they start interfering with traffic. Dean's fail, Dean's Trail Phase Three A, it, it's the section, uh, between Robinson and Dick Smith. Uh, we've, all the design is done, all the easements are, have been obtained. We, uh, were notified recently that we have to do an archaeological survey, so that's initiated. We're expecting to have everything completed within three months and then we'd be ready to go out to bid. Uh, the construction time on that is estimated to be about a year.
What, what?
There we go.
What is, uh, Robinson to Dick Smith, that's already part of the trail, ain't it?
Uh, so the Robinson.
I think you mean to Don Tyson, don't you?
Did I put Dick Smith?
Yeah, you said Dick Smith. I think you mean Robinson to Don Tyson.
Don Tyson, I apologize.
Okay.
Yeah, my, my fault.
All right.
The, uh, the red on the top is Phase Two going underneath Robinson.
Okay.
And then the yellow is, uh, Phase Three A.
Okay.
And, uh, when they put in Don Tyson, they, uh, were forward-thinking and, and built a trail underneath there, a, a tunnel underneath the road, so that'll save us, other than a weed eater, it's ready to go, so we, we'll connect to that and save a lot.
That'll, that'll basically get us from Robinson, get people from Robinson all the way to the animal shelter.
Yes.
Right.
Absolutely.
Ever get a weed eater out there before we go under it?
Uh, well, I've been under it a few times and, uh, the, that's pretty minor compared to building it, but yeah, it's overgrown. Uh, Phase Three B will take us from, from, uh, Don Tyson to the Lake Fayetteville Trail. And, uh, last week you guys approved the funding for the design on that. And here's a potential route, it's, I think, the, the favored route right now with, uh, speaking with the designers. Uh, it, 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 it takes a lot of, uh, a lot of that is city property, so it won't cost us anything to go across there. It connects the Elizabeth Richardson Center, which I think is, is really good, that's a wonderful idea. And then it will go underneath, uh, Highway two sixty-five and connect to the trail, giving us a complete loop.
Is that an existing? Is the pathway underneath existing or will there be another tunnel there?
There's, there's nothing existing there.
Okay.
This isn't, this isn't, I'm sorry? No.
And it's not, we're not looking at a grade crossing there, we're looking at the tunnel.
Well, I mean, it's, obviously, we, we're just starting a design process, but yes, our, our, uh, wish is a tunnel underneath there. That's a pretty busy road.
Is that Springdale, right there where the tunnel is?
Yeah, I think it is.
But then on the other side?
The other side's Fayetteville.
It's Fayetteville.
Yes.
So, are they? In agreement with all this?
Um, well, this is a design that I thought I'd show you guys, but it's not finalized at all. This is a drawing on a map, and as we work with Garver and finalize this, there was three or four other ideas. Uh, as soon as this is a, a final idea, I'll come back to you and let you know. I just thought it'd be.
I think it's fair to say Fayetteville will have to participate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
On their portions.
Right.
Cause it, it benefits them too, yeah.
This is gonna be a, this is a wonderful project, it's connecting several schools to neighborhoods, to, to multi-family apartment complexes, uh.
I think we should just go straight over this.
Is this on the, anything? I had a cute comment, but I'll, I'll hold it.
The, uh, Spring Creek Trail, this is the section that is basically done, but it has not been turned over to the city yet. It's open and people are riding on it, it's between Thunder Chicken and, uh, near Interstate forty-nine. The holdup has been, uh, that RDOT partially funded it, so they have to sign off on us taking it over. And I guess their initial inspection, the, uh, the shrubbery wasn't established enough, the, the landscaping. And then, uh, we had a couple of, the, the, the crossing at Fortieth Street is temporary. And they weren't happy with, with how that was as far as safety-wise, so they're fixing that. So that should be resolved pretty quickly and hopefully we'll be able to take that over. And if you haven't been on that section of the trail, it's beautiful. It's really, really nice through there.
Mike, I, I did, just FYI, I did get a comment from some folks who were riding that. Out toward the end, out toward I forty-nine, it's pretty grown up. I told them I didn't think it was ours yet.
I talked to McClellan today and asked him to send some mowers out there.
Okay.
Uh, our, our Parks and Rec is ready to get on it, they're calling me saying, you give us the word and we'll mow it, but it's not ours yet. So it's still the prop, the, the, uh, it's the responsibility of the contractor until it's turned over to us.
Okay.
Hopefully it will be soon, cause our Parks and Rec will do a wonderful job of maintaining this. But it's beautiful if you haven't been out there. Uh, last week you guys approved the funding for the design of the next phase of this. And as the map shows, it, the trail ends there by the interstate. This will go under an existing bridge, so we won't have to tunnel underneath forty-nine. And it'll end at Whittle Road. It's, from Whittle Road, we're gonna be able to, to continue, uh, west to the Shaw Park and to, uh, the side trails that are coming up on Fifty-Sixth Street and County Line. So it's gonna really connect a lot of things.
I think once we get to Fifty-Sixth, from whi, from where this ends, which is just a short distance, I think the rest of the way to Shaw Park, we're pretty much in, the water department pretty well owns most all of that right away.
Yep, they sure do.
And we're pretty close to the existing trail, right? Where this one stops on Whittle? I mean, where's Razorback Greenway now? It's on, uh, right by the interstate. Oh, where?
No, you're on the other side of town.
Okay, I'm confused.
Yeah. So, uh, to your point though, uh, you know, the, when they redo.
They're on the route is where the existing trail ends.
When they redo one twelve?
I'm sorry, I was confused.
Yeah.
When they redo one twelve, we're gonna have a trail from, uh, Fayetteville all the way to Bentonville, and this hopefully will eventually connect to that. But I guess that's a ways in the future. Uh, the Pride Trail, uh, it's, uh, connecting Harbor to Springdale and on to downtown. Uh, I, I, parts of it's under construction is why I put it in here, the, the part between Fortyth Street and Gooton San. Uh, that's gonna be wonderful. It goes right to, uh, Central Junior High. We're pretty excited, the committee, the Active Transportation Committee, this is one of their priorities, they wanna get a east-west route through there. Uh, they're really active on this and they're planning the, how to get from Gooton San to Pleasant Street to connect to the other, the rest of the trail system. Uh, the rest of it going west is gonna come with the construction of the overpass.
I don't wanna say too much, or, because, because the Trails Committee is going to bring a recommendation at, when the time is right. But are, I think, is it fair to say that we're from Pleasant to probably to Westwood or to Campbell? We're probably looking at a lot of on-street, share-the-road type infrastructure, where we just ride bikes like we did when we were kids, right? Do you think?
So I don't wanna say too much either, because I'll probably be coming back to you in the next few weeks, but, uh, there's some funding opportunities there.
Okay.
And I'm not sure what they're gonna look like, but we, we'll, we'll need to know pretty quickly because the deadline's pretty quick.
Okay.
But yes, it's a possibility of on-street.
Okay.
Uh, the money, uh, as of today, cash in the account, six point four million dollars. That's the street fund, uh, a good portion of that is used for overlay and other street projects, but that's also where we're funding these trail projects out of the city's portion of it. We actually have about two million dollars that's, uh, in investment accounts, that's why the eight point four is the total amount, but six point four, we can get our money, our hands on it today. Just, uh, the monthly turnback from the state that funds this is about six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars on average per month, which is seven and a half million dollars a year.
You're talking about the street fund in general, not, not any portion that's designated for trails, right?
That's correct. There, there is no portion designated for trails, so.
Strictly for trails.
Yeah.
It comes out of that.
Correct. Now, there is about four million dollars in there that's grant money that is earmarked for trails, and that's, uh, for the complete construction of the, uh, Phase Two of Dean's Trail and the completion of Spring Creek Trail.
And it's not part of the six point four?
That is part of it, yes.
It is part of it.
Take that out when you're talking about this part, because if that's already earmarked and it's dedicated to those two trails, it doesn't.
And I, and I, I brought it up a couple times, I hate to keep saying this, but it's, this is, is pretty confusing. Because some grants we get, they live in this account, we get them ahead of time. Other grants, the federal grants, we have to, we have to spend the money and then get reimbursed. So actually, there's more money than that in there that we haven't received yet because we haven't finished construction to send the invoices for reimbursement. And that's it. If you guys have any questions.
We're in these tunnels, are we lighting these tunnels?
Yes.
So, um, the, uh, underneath, uh, seventy-one there on Spring Creek, we had had a request and I brought it up to our parks before, but you know where we're at on lighting for that?
We're trying to get permission from RDOT to, to light that.
Okay.
I don't know if Chad's here.
I don't think he is, but y'all have, y'all have looked at all the tunnels, existing tunnels, not just the new ones. And, and, uh, so Brian, besides that one, uh, there's probably two or three more.
Pump station, throw.
Pump station, uh, yeah, Spring, uh.
Don Tyson has, Don Tyson has lighting. Didn't we put lighting in when we built it? I'm pretty sure we did.
It looked like it. It looked, I saw a light, but, uh, but yeah, uh, uh, Shallow. Where, there by Bluff Cemetery, he's also. That's where I think we're talking about when we say pump station, yeah.
And, and I will, I haven't heard anything in a little while on that. I know we've, we've had a lot of correspondence with RDOT, I'll get an update and let you know.
I know at, at one point Chad was getting estimates and that included getting electricity to some of them, so.
And we got all that, uh, all that was put on pause when RDOT came forward and said, that's not the standards and that's a, that's a state highway. So, we, we, uh, we learned a lot going through that process.
Is there a, it, there's been talk about actually lighting the greenway. Do you know if that's moving forward or know any more about that?
The talk is moving forward.
Okay.
It's expensive.
Yeah.
But, uh, that's, we, we haven't gotten anywhere because of the cost.
Okay.
But we're, we're doing sections of it and, and, uh, tunnels and things like that.
Right. Dean's Trail is, it's being bid as lit, right? Cause the partial, portion that's already built is lit. I think, I think, I think we can, we can double check and make sure.
I know the tunnel is.
But I think the section continuing south is planned to be lit.
Okay, well, yeah, we haven't went out to bid on that yet.
Okay. I think it's being designed that way.
Okay.
Yeah.
Along the, the lighting, um, discussion, is there any kind of, uh, safety, you know, how like on, uh, we were speaking of this, there's this whole light and you can just push a button for, uh, help, is there anything like that that works for those cars?
I spoke to a vendor yesterday and they, they provide those buttons and, uh, they, you, they use cell signals so that we don't have to run wiring, but, uh, I haven't gotten any money, uh, I haven't gotten any, uh, bids on that yet. I, no, we don't have anything like that on the trail, uh.
Do we, is there any on the greenway that you know of?
Not in Springdale. I don't know about the other cities. They are getting ready to, uh, start putting up the, uh, mile markers and all of that. Uh, it's, looks really nice. Each city's different color, we're red for Springdale, Fayetteville's purple and, uh.
When you say they are getting ready to?
The Razorback Greenway Alliance.
So who's paying for it? The city pays for their own portion?
No, the Razorback Greenway Alliance will pay for that.
They have a grant for that.
There are crossings that are lit in, uh, Fayetteville across North Street. And the railroad track down.
Yeah, they have kind of a signalization there for crossing those streets, right?
Now, as, as far as the crossing the street. Yeah, like at, uh, Electric, when we cross that, we're gonna put all of that in and it'll have an island, a protective island.
Right.
But we, we do have those types of crossings at Sanders and at Pump Station, or, yeah, Pump Station. Where the, when tra, when, when riders or walkers come near it, then it, it begins, it activates it.
And like Emma with, uh, you push the button.
So Mike, um, I wanna know how it's working, the, the, the whole thing about taking care of the trail. Because you got different, I mean, you being former police chief, you were kind of in charge of security of the trail, I guess, to some degree, right? Or, is that right?
Yes.
And, and then, um, who does the, um, maintenance?
Public Works. I'm sorry, Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec does all the mowing. If concrete's broken and has to be patched, who does that?
They do it if they can handle it. If not, then Public Works will do it.
Okay.
Public Works just fixed a section out on the, uh, Shallow Trail as you turn and go toward the Jones Center from, from Park Street. Y'all did that, didn't you, James? It was a pretty significant repair, yeah.
So how, are, are you the one, are you the point man for all those things to get coming together?
Yes. I, I, I coordinate that, like the, for instance, the new trail, uh, going to Fitzgerald Mountain. I went out there and walked it with, uh, with Parks and Rec, went over any issues or concerns they had, and then I communicated with the Fire and Police Departments about making sure we had bollards to keep the vehicles off and that they would have access to remove the bollards if they have an emergency, they can drive on those trails. Yeah, I communicated with, with all those departments.
Okay. So if I have a complaint, I come to you, right?
No, I don't take complaints. But yeah, if, if you send me a complaint, uh, we'll, uh, we'll get it to the people that can fix it if I can't take care of it.
But I don't, I don't know that he necessarily needs to be, we can include him when.
On graffiti?
On graffiti, but, but I think James and, I think James and, uh,
When you.
When you send it to Mike, it'll get to him.
Okay, so here's, here's an example.
Okay.
And, and when there's graffiti, the Parks and Rec's out there mowing. Is Parks and Rec telling somebody if they see graffiti on the trails, what I wanna know?
Yes, they do.
I'm not so sure they do.
When, when you sent the email on Dean's Trail, uh, it got sent to me. I got on my bike and I went down the road, took pictures, uh, and I communicated with Public Works and Parks and Rec, and they informed me, since that was my first experience of what part's their responsibility, and they worked together and cleaned it up.
Well, and, 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 and here's why I'm asking that, because the, that, that bad one that happened that, that brought to the attention of the mayor on Ford Avenue. They were out there pretty, somebody was out there pretty quick to get the, the bridge and all that on the, around Ford Avenue. But coming back down the trail, there was stuff on the sidewalk. That did not get done for several weeks. My point is surely Parks and Rec had mowed, and were they not saying anything about the sidewalk?
I'll have to follow up with them.
Yeah, we probably need to have.
I mean, it's done now. I mean, somebody has, it's, it's fixed, and I'm not saying anything, James, I'm just wondering. I just wanna make sure that it's all being coordinated.
Well, James, if, it's my understanding that you guys don't take care of the actual surface of the trail, right? You will, okay. Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I thought Chad told me that they were gonna take care of that.
Graffiti on the surface of the trail?
On the surface, and then I know you guys were doing the bridges and the, the things off of the trail. I was just making sure I remembered that conversation correctly.
Right. I think the, the bigger point is that we not only need Parks and Rec, but we need Public Works, we need every department. PD.
To work together.
Fire, anytime any city employee sees graffiti, they oughta report it so we can get it taken care of.
I agree, and I can tell you that since I went into this position, I've been very impressed with the cooperation from Parks and Recs and Public Works. Both of them have, anything I've asked them to do, they just did it.
Well, I'm not denying that, I just wanna make sure that, like the mayor says, we all work together and try and keep this under control.
And they, when, when I sat down with them, that was my first experience with graffiti, and they said, well, this is our responsibility, this is ours. We'll take care of it, you know, and I'm sure if either one of them needed any help, they'd take care of it.
I think, I think everybody responds well. I think it's just that.
Keeping your eye on.
We need more, more of our employees who are out there among it, amongst it, to, uh, to take the initiative to make sure we know about it.
That'd be a great topic with department heads have with their folks.
Yeah.
I think to Jeff's point, and I can't speak for Chad, but I know James takes care of a lot of the graffiti and has a lot more experience doing that, and I think he's getting out there quicker and fixing it where what was actually on the trail, if I'm understanding you right, that's Chad. And I'm guessing they don't do near what you do. And with all the mowing and everything they got going on, I'm sure they're a little slower responding. Not on purpose, but it sounds to me that that's what's happened. I would like to see Chad and James get together and if James is fixing it all the time, just be consistent and knock it out. Take it off Chad's hands.
Yeah, I don't see why James can't, why Public Works can't, y'all just take care of graffiti, wherever it is.
If we see it, we do.
Yeah.
I'd be happy to volunteer him.
Chad would probably be happy too.
I mean, I mean, they had to, they had to come out, I re, I reported some graffiti actually on Rogers Avenue on the street. And I contacted Public Works so they could take care of it, but also always contact the police department so they can get pictures of it.
I usually contact the judge and let him try to take care of it. Hey Mike, what about, uh, the centerline stripe on the trail? Are, are, do we have a plan for that?
Depends on how wide the trails are, the, the. Depends on how wide the trails are. The wider trails, the greenway, they're they're striped. Uh, do you have a specific trail?
Not off the top of my head, but I was just wondering.
Just email me or call me and if I don't know, I'll find out.
Based off the width?
Yes, based off the width.
Minimum width is what?
I don't remember, but the one going to Fitzgerald Mountain is it's, we're not gonna stripe that, it's not wide enough. The ten and twelve foot trails get striped. I think that one might be eight, eight feet.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, I'll I'll give you an example, the around the airport, it's not striped. Is that too narrow?
No, it should be striped. It may have worn off, maybe we need to restripe it. That's twelve feet. And they striped the new portion on the, that they had to redo where uh, Park and Cottle and Powell intersect. At that project, they they restriped that section of new trail, so we might need to look at that. We might, might need new striping along Powell especially.
Was, that was probably the contractor for that road project?
Yeah.
The greenway's always striped. Is that what you said?
Right. So we may need to look at that. It may need to be redone.
Especially the portions that are off the greenway, maybe.
Yeah, those were a lot more likely to get overlooked.
Yeah.
All right. Anybody have anything else on this topic?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Uh, we're gonna move on to landscaping, mowing overview and updates and presented by our public works director, Mr. James Mill.
I didn't bring a slide.
Hope you bring hunting pictures or something.
I wish. So what we do, we have um, nine employees, seven temps, six porters. And Public Works mows and brush hogs over two hundred and sixty acres, give or take, because not every drainage ditch is maintained at a weekly deal. Um, our contractors, they mow right at a hundred and ninety acres. And then they've been renewed every year. This is their third year and they propose a nine percent increase for next year. Um, so that'll be roughly a hundred and eighty-eight thousand.
So you, what did you say we maintain now? Two hundred and what?
Two hundred and fifty-six acres.
Okay, plus a hundred and ninety that we contract out.
Right.
Okay, so basically four hundred and, four hundred, yeah, around four hundred and fifty acres.
Right. And that's not to count all the projects that we purchased land before the project starts, we have to maintain that as well.
Right, so the property, properties we own.
Right.
Uh, and every time we build a street, a road, a new road, we're adding to that total.
Right. And that's what I figured, a hundred and ninety acres for next year for the contractor, that includes sixty-fourth out there.
That doesn't include our parks either, that's.
No, that's, that's totally separate, right. This is all of our right of way and drainage and things of that nature. So all the fire stations, animal shelter, uh, city hall, Public Works, we mow all those and all the flower beds.
What about the uh, interstate intersections?
That's contractor.
But that is our responsibility.
Yes, for Don Tyson. Yeah, Don Tyson, Robinson Avenue and Sunset and then Elm Springs.
This has been the worst year, we were talking about it at department head meeting last week. This, this has been the worst year I know of and 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 with what neighborhood services is having to deal with. Uh, I've just seen more individual private property that has not been well maintained at all. Mow, mow, just been mowing, much less weed eating and trimming.
Right, yeah, it shut down there in summer for about a month, few weeks, and then all of a sudden the rain opened up and nobody can keep up. It just took over. Oh, and Bluff Cemetery, that's a little over twenty-five acres and she's proposing a five percent increase for fifty-five thousand, six hundred for next year. But that's all looking really good out there as well. Yes.
And that's all is is a portion of that comes out, any anything along the right of way comes out of street turn back.
Correct.
Does other thing, what about other areas like, not everything, not all our mowing can come out of the street.
Right, you know, such as our fire stations, city hall, Public Works, anything that's not in the right of way.
What about uh, tree damage, tree planting, tree trimming? Is that contracted or do we do that?
We do a lot of it, uh, depending on how the size of the tree. Um, Public Works has an arborist if the tree's too big and we'll reach out to him. So that saves us the money not have to contract it out. But all the tree planting like Don Tyson, Gene George, anytime one of those dies or gets ran over, we'll order in the new tree and put them back.
Y'all have some coming for this fall?
We do.
Yeah. And I noticed a lot of the little evergreens out there on Elm Springs Road.
They're gonna be replaced.
They didn't make it.
Right.
Yeah.
What about the uh, like weeds and overgrown, things like that along the roadways that we talked about? In the past, there was one specific example there by the uh, for our recreation.
Yeah, Parks and Rec, we had James's crews go out uh, on Sunset, well, it was on Rob, uh, Robinson Avenue.
Right.
Um.
Well, we've hit them when we had to, just like some around our neighborhood, Amelia, and and I I went to James and I asked him, I said, just figure what it would be in next year's budget. And I don't know if you've actually landed on that yet, but to actually create a crew just to hit the bad parts of city right of way where property owners aren't taking care of it. And hopefully, I mean, I mean, we, we have places where there's a a green space and a sidewalk. And the property owner's not mowing between the sidewalk and the and the curb. I don't understand that, I don't get it, but it's happening. And and we just need, we need to be able to, including downtown, we need to be able to help instill some pride in some things and and maybe we need a crew just to kind of keep those, those areas, uh, those trouble spots, keep them nice and hopefully people will catch on. I don't know. That was the idea. I don't know if you, have you given much more thought to that?
Yeah, I've I've added one employee for the landscaping division for next year. Um, we're gonna try to not fill that position. Uh, we're gonna try to blitz all of Springdale first in the season to get it all cleaned up before we get into really hard mowing. Hopefully we can cover it that way and not have to fill that extra position, but I budget it just in case.
So a little weed eating and grass killing in those spots would do, would do wonders. Cracks, cracks where it grows up through the, between the gutter and the street.
Right.
Of those types of areas, if we can hit those once a year with some grass killer, then that would do wonders.
Right, we already do it.
We're gonna have a concentrated effort downtown and we've, we've done that.
Right.
We're, we're gonna need that all over when we can. I know there's only, there's only so much we can do, but we can try.
Right.
I had a question today about uh, campaign signs and how far do they need to be set off the road?
That kind of depends, doesn't it?
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's Mike's area for signage.
Cause I heard some of them are getting pulled up and removed and.
Yeah, because the right of way is different.
Right.
Yeah, if they're in the R Doc's right of way, there's no question about it, but.
Mine's been very neatly, um, vandalized, vandalized recently over by my church and uh, so if you ever want to go by and see what I'm like with the mustache.
Boy.
Uh, now there's some good work at this one there.
Mustaches are in these days.
So is this report from James in response to me asking about it the other night or what, or?
Yes.
Okay, so I was gonna ask James, um, more about landscaping. Such as uh, downtown landscaping, corner of Robinson and Pleasant landscaping. The interstate landscape, when I'm saying landscaping, I guess I'm talking about flowers.
Flower beds.
Yeah, flower beds. Uh, somebody already asked about the trees, I assume on Don Tyson, uh, other places.
Robinson, Robinson and Pleasant.
In front of Walgreens.
Okay.
I mean, that was kind of a poor idea in my opinion to begin with. We planted like fifty crepe myrtles. You know, and the, and the plan when we planted those was mulch and somebody thought we were gonna be able to keep the weeds out of there. Well, that lasted about a year. You know, and and now it's just tall grass growing in the crepe myrtles. Do we have a plan to redo that corner or do you know or?
They were working on it and that's where they thinned out the crepe myrtles where they can get through there with mowers. Because all they were notoriously known for was catching Walmart bags blowing around. So it was always a trashy corner.
Right.
So they're, we're working on cleaning that corner up and making it look more presentable, where it can be better maintained.
Yeah, sometimes simple, you know, I'm a simple person, I guess, but you know, I I believe in keeping it simple, the kiss theory. But uh, sometimes just grass that you can mow and some trees is, looks a whole lot better than trying to maintain. What about the flowers and bushes around the park? Who's, who does that?
Parks Department.
They're totally in charge of the flowers and bushes at the park, in the parks.
Right, other than Turbo Downtown, we take care of those beds.
Cause y'all do all the landscaping downtown?
Yes.
Any other discussions?
They also, y'all also did landscaping on, uh, along the greenway. Here's another exception, what Parks do. Y'all do the landscaping on the greenway on Powell down past the junior highs, you approached Don Tyson.
Right, both those flower beds in the street.
And and the other trees that are planted along the uh, trail besides part he just mentioned, it's the city, I mean, the Parks Department's responsibility?
Usually, yeah, if it's along the greenway or the trail, they take care of them.
Are we still taking care of the flower beds along the interstate?
Yes.
Do we still get funding for that from contributors that went away?
I think that was just a one-time thing.
Was it?
Yeah, that, that was basically, I'll, we'll put it in if y'all will maintain it.
Right.
Yeah.
I do kind of like Jeff's idea there, I mean, if we can make the crepe myrtles, make that work by thinning them out, that's great. But grass and trees would really be nice there.
I agree.
And do we also take care of Gene George, I assume, down the median?
Yes.
We contract that.
Contract the mowing, but we take care of all the trees and plants. We, we hope to catch them.
As long as we can find them, yeah.
Anybody else? Thank you, James.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Brian, we put, we put these next two items on there because we have, with Kevin's resignation, we have openings on our public vehicle commission and also on our uh, CDBG committee. He was on both of those committees and what you've been doing, unless somebody particular wants them and could talk to Rex, you would assign him to Rex.
Yeah, well, I'm not particularly CDBG, especially with the influx of all these nonprofits we have coming in, I think. Uh, somebody, I hate to say it, but Rex, Rex's ability would help us to review those, to uh, make sure we know exactly who we stand on because we just, there's a whole flood of those that came in and we have no idea who they are or how they really are accounted for and I think the public vehicle commission says it does nothing, he does nothing to be appropriate.
Well, um, and also Rex has always had a very good working relationship with the taxicab companies in town.
Always.
Uh-huh, so, and historically, we've kind of let the person that comes into a position take over the previous. But then again, in January, you know, from time to time, we look at trading out committees or.
Y'all usually just open it up and say, if somebody would rather have a win, we'll talk about it.
So I'd say at least until January that we just put Rex in both of those.
Mayor, I ran, last time I was on the council, I was over, over it, so I'm familiar with the.
Over the?
CD.
CDBG?
And Public Works, I mean, Public Works.
That's one I was on, I was chairman of the, of the, give me a block, Rand.
We need to be sure, uh, we need to be sure and connect, Kobe, we need to be sure and connect Rex with Dean, so he knows uh, Dean Allen works under, works in Patsy's office and he's, he's our connection with CDBG, so he's over there on Blair Street right now, but we'll, we'll be sure to.
Mayor, we also want to go ahead and give a tentative date out of October twenty-first, um, as the first day of our budget meetings that we're gonna have this fall. We want to get the budget kind of wrapped up before the elections, so that'll, that Friday will be the first day. If we need additional days, we can set them, uh, as as we need them.
I'd like to take at least two days to review the budget instead of having it all crammed in at once, because it really gives an opportunity to really adjust all the numbers and ask the questions.
Well, yeah, let me, let me throw a, let me ask you this, because I, I thought it was really successful last year. We got good feedback on it. Having all, Mike, having all the departments there in one day, that way y'all only had to take off one day. And then after that one day, if there's, that gives you a good overall view of everything. And then if you have more questions, we can have other meetings. Is that, I don't know, you'd say, I mean, it's up to y'all, but.
We could piggyback a, a subsequent meeting after a, or before a city council meeting, after a city council meeting if we need them.
We did, we did deal with some more of it in committee meetings after that meeting last year, but I just felt like that, it, I, I thought it was well received and that everybody liked kind of getting it all, because you can, when you have a whole picture and you're, you're talking about one department after another and you see it all before you, then that helps you get a better picture of the overall budget. And it's a tentative date of the twenty-first?
October twenty-first.
So when would we have that in our hands?
Yeah, that's what I was.
It, it would be an all-day like last year.
I mean, when would we have the budget? How, how long before that?
We, we should have the budget, uh, I would say two weeks before that, we'll have it out to you. And an example of what the mayor was talking about is last year, we had subsequent discussions of increasing the police officer's starting pay. So we did have additional meetings after the all-day meeting, so that, there's nothing to keep us from doing.
You know what would be good, Kobe? If if we could have the budget in our hands and have a committee meeting, hopefully. I don't know where we would have committee meeting before October twenty-first, but if we could just have a general overview from you or the mayor of the proposed budget before we even get to the department heads, is that possible?
Uh, that would be October the third, well, we'd have one October seventeenth.
So maybe we could do it that night.
Sure, we could, we could give a broad overview of everything.
And hopefully have the budget before that.
Yeah, we'll have, we'll have the budget before then too.
So you'll, you'll have the, if we, if we discuss it on the committee meeting of the
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, then you'll, you should have the budget a good week, week and a half before that.
Okay, that'd be good. Let's just plan on doing that on the seventeenth as well.
Okay.
It probably won't work for everybody or it's always gonna be somebody, but I do leave town the morning of the twenty-first and I'm back on the thirtieth.
Okay. Well, you'll have the budget.
I'll have the budget, but I'll not be here that Friday.
And we'll have Rex.
And you'll have Rex.
Is that date okay for everybody else?
Is it a Friday?
Yeah, it's a Friday, the twenty-first.
I don't think that far in the bench.
We'll, we'll send an email reminder.
All right.
I'm not zooming.
Okay, we'll plan on that for now.
So we're good with this, those two discussion items?
Yes.
All right, then, we're good.